Okay, the Senate will call this meeting to order. If you would please stand. And Councilman Lee will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if Mr. Webmore would please lead us in here.
Tomorrow, as we celebrate our nation's independence, I offer a reading from an excerpt from the First Prayer of our founding fathers by the Continental Congress in 1774. "O Lord, our heavenly Father, high and mighty King of kings, lord of lords, who thou hast from thy throne behold all dwellers on earth, and rais'd with power supreme in uncontrol over all the kingdoms, empires, and governments; look down in mercy when ye besiege thee. On these are American states, who have fled from thee, from the wrath of the opposer, and thrown themselves in thy gracious protection, desiring to be henceforth dependent only on thee."
Thank you, Councilman. Will the court please call the room?
Karen?
Here.
Hadid?
Here.
Levy?
Present.
Seaberry? Stanley? Taylor?
Here.
Kola? Negrit?
Present.
Negretzsch?
Present.
Dorsey?
Here.
Halles? Cabo?
Present.
Sadi?
Present.
Diskanti?
Here.
Wehhor?
Present.
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Shinis?
Present.
Wartello?
Here.
Skazapaba? And Teichel?
Present.
Okay, there being fifteen present and six absent, but the record reflects the following. Councilman Hadid is at business, on business trip. Councilman Seaberry is out of state. Councilman Stanley is at a family event. Councilman Pollitt is at work as a work-related commitment. Councilman Halles is at a family event. And Councilman Skazapaba fell sick about ten minutes ago. So, that's pretty much is the finish for this evening. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. As any member of the public who wishes to address the council this evening, please do so, but I have specifically on the agenda, and you must be a resident and a cashier of the city of Danbury. So, if you're that as any member of the public who wishes to address the council, please do so.
Thank you, Your Honor. Then we have the Southland community's landlord and your honor, Ellen Fong. Would you dare to indulge me and allow me to speak on the department called the Dream Homes, which is the city of Danbury's point of entry to the homeless community. I think most of you know we are outside living in Danbury for two weeks or so. And I want to assure you that there was no exploitation of the homeless going on. I think I've been involved in working with the homeless even before my course made, you know, twenty years now. But also that there's no politics involved. I'm no longer on campus, and to the best of my knowledge, no one ever said of any sort was running for public office this election and a government was next election either. But we need to know that during the winters, I staffed in from the overflow day where folks waited to get into our emergency shelter to come to stay warm. And this marked a group of homeless individuals circulated a petition because they wanted to know what happened to the pending plan. They took the petition to the news times and nothing ever occurred as a result of that petition. So, I wrote an op-ed on April 15th, the day two of our overflow shelter was closed, trying to try to bring people's awareness to the fact that when we only had the third day in the city shelters operating, there are only thirty-nine emergency beds in the city of Danbury. There were a hundred and eighty-two homeless individuals, according to this month's report from the Dream Homes report. So, I thought that was a real problem. So, we did those two things. In Maine, we went to the Danbury Housing Partnership. We spoke with them, they said, Lynn, nobody wants to build a formal housing in Danbury. We're above the ten percent. You should go talk to the churches. So, on May 4th, we went and spoke to the board of directors of the Association of Religious Communities and asked them to get behind trying to raise this DIA hyperparade rate. After that, in June, we went to the regular monthly meeting of contingent care. Those are all of the organizations that provide services to the homeless here in Danbury. And still couldn't get a response to what is happening in that pending plan. So, we had made a fact sheet.
Yes, sir.
Leave some for me to have. But basically, the plan originally called for fifteen units of permanent supportive housing in the first year, twenty units in the second year, and thirty units in each of the next three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and ten years, adding up to two-hundred-and-seventy-five units. And a hundred and fifty of those units were going to serve households of two or more persons. But a hundred and twenty-five would serve individuals here in Danbury who are single and really can't qualify for family housing. If you want to get into family housing, you have to add that. That's one of their requirements. The resource, the fact sheet also shows you the resources that are here in our state for this kind of housing, and that's listed for you. And the state of Connecticut has a goal of having ten thousand units of supportive housing by 2016. They have five thousand already. Don't we want to see that kind of housing here in Danbury? Because your facts, though, are being spent everywhere, but you... The other thing on your fact sheet is cost effectiveness. Doesn't really save us money for dividing. It certainly does, or once the limit goes down. But the most important thing, if you look on the back, it has the bed night numbers for the dates of November 15th to April 15th. And it's staggering. We had six thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-five bed nights in the overflow shelters in Dorsey Gate, the non-vilital emergency center. Six thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-five bed nights. The city shelter had two thousand four-hundred and eight. Now, if you provide, for instance, housing for just two women and/or her numbers, eight-hundred-and-seventy-four women bed nights across the street. If we housed two of those women in permanent housing, the bed nights would drop to five-thirty-two. So, you can see that it will make a big impact on the homeless population that we're struggling to serve in waiting for housing. But I'll tell you too, folks are circulating the kitchen. We have lots of things to do already, asking you to make the pending plan, the permanent housing, supportive housing, a higher priority, especially now as you're beginning to start the long anticipated revitalization of the downtown. We don't want our downtown to resemble a bower in any way. And seeing numbers like this, yeah, be concerned. And we don't want a library or a community factory on Jason or homeless individuals. I encourage you, Mark, I'm a hundred percent behind you on this issue. We don't go beyond a lot, but your plan is good. We'd like to see it happen.
This is my guy! Any other members of the public? We're in our office so much, we're going to hire you. All good. We just need your name for the record. And your address.
Fifty-five, San Diego. I'm thirty-five, Stacey.
Fifty-five, Stacey.
I'm one of the others. I want to see, you know, our town is called, you know, Mr. Shepherd, on the left. But everybody should have got to see. Actually, we sent you that, too. I think we have this one. A couple of people, one person, one girl, and one was made to, sorry, very very, very snowy and snowy. I stress the fact that we need...
Just come a little closer to the mic. You can get the statement.
I stress the fact that we need the supportive housing. I thought that Mr. Shepherd, when he was around, he was, there was a lot of people that need that's the, that are massive because of the economy that's running. You know, and I thought that building here is not a problem. I'm not going to mention, I talked to, you know, another, I talked to Mr. Paul, Mr. Shepherd, at length, to make several thousand, and I planned it out, and I'm a, I'm a two of the four, fifty-five rooms in this building. And I don't know how, I've been with the man, so I've seen there are social options. It's, you know, if you do go to the home, when it comes to those things, then maybe we can do this stuff. I'm not that as a person, I'm somebody that I agree with you as partnership, but I don't as anything. I don't know, I have something together, and it's something that the livelihoods sometimes program. Not the ones that, the ones that you, those are the ones that are really concerned. I've seen the families, Mr. Paul, in, in Saudi, back in 2005, or 2006, and I've seen that speech, and it's a moment that we're seeing some different, so I really, I certainly appreciate. I'm going to say this, this is why we started, and that's why we're, we're pushing something that we're starting to, giving the push, positive push, and, but we don't really...
Any other members of the public who wish to address? Yes, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Mark Green, and I am a current resident, resident, my current resident, since I'm long out here, my public. And I would like to request that we approach this subject from a perspective not as Democrat, Republican, or independent, or service, or middle of the road, with a consensus, the fact that it's a common denominator value of our society to treat human beings with at least as much respect as we treat homeless dogs and cats. The city appropriates, in the current budget, $266,000 to help homeless dogs and cats. The homeless shelter is provided mainly with federal, close to money, and it is accommodating only a percentage, a small percentage of the homeless. If you go out and meet some of the homeless outside, you'll find that they're former, generally formerly middle-class citizens, who because of health problems, or lack of insurance, divorce, an addiction problem of one type or another, or mental illness, or some other similar kind of problem, have had their lives devastated, just exactly like homeless dogs or homeless cats. And I just ask that you approach this situation with an open mind and dispel any prejudice against the homeless. And just try to see what you can come up to, with consensus, form of community with some charitable and religious, nonprofit organizations, as well as government agencies, and do something to help them, please.
Ms. Waller?
Hi, I'm Meg Waller, DIA hyperparade mayor of Danbury, Connecticut. I wanted to address number three, but I understand it's been a little drawn in the agenda. And I want to thank you for doing that since the public had no access to see what it was. I know it don't even need it. Number four, the sale of Dan on Rockwood Road. I don't know. I don't think we should be buying this piece of property. I don't think we should pay $20,000 for it. If the gentleman wants to donate it to the city of Danbury, that's fine. But I really don't think that we should use it for, use Danbury's money to do that. And also, by again, step in the, but I want to thank you for what you have done already for the homeless, and for helping the people, partly because I know you have done a lot. And I know the city is wrong, and I know we have different types. We have donated to various shelters down there. But I just, I would like to see some of us in camps, over the new town, in Brookfield, in Duffell, and Ridgefield, and some of the other towns that I don't really mean anything. I'm talking several other towns, and they don't give a darn about it. But they're having a problem with Danbury, who does probably do something. I want to thank all of you for what you do. Maybe it is possible to do more, I don't know. But as our taxes go up, we end up getting closer and closer to being homeless our size. So, thank you very much for what you do.
Further discussion. Mr. Drucker?
Hey, Drucker, again, repeating your note. I was also going to speak on number three. I'm happy that you moved that as well, because CG knew the day as well as about. But if you didn't, I was glad it's not here, so I'll put it up later. Number four, Rockwood Lane. I'm Rockwood Lane, humor is only because of two years ago I stood up here and urged the council not to sell a piece of land on the end of Rockwood Lane for $20,000 that we weren't sure was going to happen with it, they don't know the road, and how there is so many city parcels in that area that eventually if we kept acquiring property, we could wind up with one of, say, Jack Howe House's trails going from off the way, I believe, down to Bridget Park. I think it's a good idea to look at this piece of property, the 4.7 acres. I think I agree with Ms. Waller, see if we can get the chief landlord donated, but I don't think we should just take it off the burn. I think we should take a serious look at it. It is landlocked, it is on a wood fund area, you know, there could be some environmental issues there. Later on down the road, if we do not look into purchasing or acquiring this piece of property, later would it be developed, and would they be, you know, how do they get to the landlot? Because I didn't know you could actually landlot land, but I'm not a, you know, attorney in that area. So, these are all things like preventative medicine that you should look at. Number five, the entertainment licensing. I think we need to look at that a little bit more. It's, in my opinion, there's some vague areas there, and it's kind of a slippery slope. You know, talking about noise, yes, you know, we don't want to have rockers, loudness that's going to disturb everybody, but the other aspect, we don't want to look at areas where, how do we enforce it? Do we need to hire more people in various areas? Are the police going to be diverted from things that may become, not areas to enforce things with this? So, I think we need to look at that a little bit more, and find some, and really get a good sense on it. Number six, whether or not I think it's a great idea. I think it would be good to lower these fees towards businesses and such that want to come downtown and want to develop and want to bring back downtown Danbury, bringing down the fees to, you know, for the inspection, the fire inspections, and, you know, building inspections, et cetera. I think it's a great idea. Hopefully, it doesn't turn into no into a developer coming in wanting to exploit those fees for some project that we don't see that fits our plan of development, like we've seen in similar areas. Number eighteen, I'm almost done. Number eighteen, the play organs. I've already spoken on this many times. I still think it's open to a lot of interpretation. I think it needs to be tuned down a bit, to be pinpointed a little bit more. As I said, thankfully, we have a good man in that position now, and he is willing to work with people, and he has had a good district in doing that, Mr. Stone, but if he was to go elsewhere or the position was focused on somebody else, the way the word is written, it's kind of open to interpretations where it could wreak havoc towards us, possible legal issues. So, I want you to look at that. Also, I'd like to see maybe more of that play organs be brought more towards developers that tear up areas of Danbury and just leave it in writing room for five, six, seven years. And we have instances of this on Flathead Bridge, we have instances of this on Hospital Avenue, we have instances of this right down to downtown Danbury. And lastly, number twenty, Belimo Air. I think it's a very good idea that we give seven-year tax payments to corporations and companies that want to stay here and provide jobs and income, et cetera, and not residential development. The only thing in reading it, I believe the seven-year tax payments should go for improvements and expansion, but last week at the ZBA meeting, they pulled their application. So, I don't know if they're, we really should look, is that seven-year tax payment worth a thing that they, was going in front of the ZBA for the expansion? If it is, maybe we need to take more time and go away from it and see exactly what they're doing. So, we don't have, like we've had in other areas, where we've had tax payments given, and the terms kind of change after that.
If anybody else wishes to address the council, you've got about five minutes left. Mrs. Mitchell? Good to see you. Happy summer.
Hi, Mrs. Mitchell, lady on the left. I don't know what I want to talk about on the agenda, but I know that at the last news times had article about people coming up here and talking about noise. I'm frustrated. My bad, there is Dr. Spark. PA systems. I, the PA systems are louder in my house than they are field. I have a 22-year-old son that suffers from migraine. I had one to work the other day. He was in the throes of a migraine. I walked over to the westers, and I asked him kindly if they could do something about the noise. It was 78 decibels in my house. It was 62 for field. I have a decimal needed, and we have to use it work. We have to keep our race car at 86 decibels from 10 feet away. That's what we have to do, because there are towns that have noise ordinances. If you cannot run a race car, you can't mow your lawn in Lakeville. You can't run a weed blower in Lakeville on Sunday. They have enforceable noise ordinances, yeah. So, you can't do it. And so, all I'm asking, so I did go over, Mr. Shaker was very nice. He walked up to the top of the building, turned and speak. PA systems are for the people living there. I don't give a crap about these games. Now, I love baseball. Don't get me wrong, I like baseball, back to the bat or the crowd, mine, but don't force it on me. You're going to have a PA system, why you have the people that want to hear it? Okay? I don't need it in my house, and my son doesn't need it. The other thing is, I talked to Mr. Murray, I think it was, at the highway department of Public Works, or somebody over there. Garbage pickup at 5:00 Sunday morning, every Sunday morning. It takes them 37 feet to back up to Garbage Trail, Rogers Park, 5:00 in the morning. All I ask is be always quiet. The park closes at 11:00. There shouldn't be anything happening until 7:00 AM in the park. No dragging of the fields, no golf carts, no 37 feet, beep, beep, beep. Because, and I'm to put up with this, we get the paying bill fine on Sunday morning so that they can pick up the garbage on Sunday morning. And oh, by the way, just to let you know, can I use the phone?
No, no, I'm just taking notes.
That PA system at the women's field, I've been a member of the Danbury Women's Softball League since 1967. The board to get our fields in on the Hatters Park, there's a board, and it says, no PA system. So, fuel for the fire, I think it's great. Forty-five years I've been playing softball, and at a lot of different levels, I don't ever remember being announced. I don't know why you would have to be announced. The only people that care about the game are sitting there. Let them hear it. And of course, the women can't, because we've been thrown out of Rogers Park, and you can't use PA system to get down, so.
And he got one minute left, and if he asks for a question. Mr. Anderson?
Frank Anderson, I'm here to play. I'd like to compliment the play organs, ADOT committee. I think they did a wonderful job. I'm hoping that all this work translates into actual evidentiary results, things that we, the public, can see. I look at the house at Wilson and Beer Hill, and I feel so sorry for those owners, particularly the ones that are trying to sell their homes right now. It's just really sad. Again, there may be things going on behind scenes. I'm not aware of, I hope there are, but I hope that translates into something we can see. Same thing with your Aunt Mall, your, whatever, the Robert Down Kennedy. The same thing up in the hospital. Things, situations where people have wanted to make a difference in the city, but for economic reasons, kind of a stop that they're doing. But what they've left behind is perhaps something that could be approved upon if we want to make a really beautiful million in Danbury. But again, compliments to the ADOT committee.
Mr. Anderson, that concludes our public speaking for tonight. I appreciate everybody's comments, as always. And then, Mr. President, we have the men's board. Uh, Mr. Knapp? Men's board. Mr. Seig?
I got the same.
All right. Sorry, I switched things up on you with Mr. Seaberry there.
I actually got tripped up myself. I thought you were making motion of a regular reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file, including the registered citizens' office.
Second? Bated seconded by Mr. Negretzsch. Any additions, corrections, or changes to the minutes as we have? So, you've done that, I'm sorry, I might, in favor, almost, in favor acceptance of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition motion carries to the man's seat. As a legislative leader, may we have the consent calendar?
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar, July 3rd, 2012. Number two, received communication concerning the appointment of Carol Turner and Laura Switzer as alternate members for the Commission on Aging, who with a term to expire on October 1st, 2015. Number eight, received communication and adopt the resolution affirming nondiscrimination agreements and warranties as required by Connecticut general statutes, sections 4A, 68-1, and 4168-1. Number nine, received communication and adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funding for the LOSA program for fire department engines company 24 building renovations not to exceed $17,000. Number 10, received communication and adopt the resolution allowing the city of Danbury Health and Human Services Department to accept increased funding from the state of Connecticut Department of Health. The grant awards for skin cancer prevention program administered through the school-based health centers in Rogers Park and Rogers... health centers in Rogers Park and Broadview Middle Schools. Total funding is twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars with no city match required. Number eleven, received the communication and adopt the resolution allowing the City of Danbury Health and Human Services Department to accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health. This allocation of ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and eight cents will be used to promote programs within the Health and Human Services Department. There is no local match required. Number twelve, received the communication and adopt the resolution allowing the City of Danbury to approve and submit the city's annual action plan for program year thirty-eight projects and a section one oh eight loan guarantee application for interest, infrastructure improvements. Available, available funding totals five hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars, no local match is required. Number thirteen, received the communication and adopt the resolution allowing the City of Danbury Fire Department to apply for and accept funding from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The requested funding through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant will not exceed five hundred thousand dollars. If awarded, fee will be refunded eighty percent of four hundred thousand dollars of the total grant award, the city is responsible for twenty percent of one hundred thousand dollars over a two-year period. Number fourteen, received the communication and adopt the resolution allowing the City of Danbury Health and Human Services Department to accept the amended funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Social Services. Contract number zero three four P S dash twenty-three slash ten D S S three seven zero one G T is now two hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. The monies returned to D S S are approximately twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. This refund was due to the state denying several requests for approvals to the emergency shelter. Number fifteen, received the communication and adopt the resolution allowing the City of Danbury to enter into agreement with State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services to serve as the custodian of a mobile communications vehicle as described in the memorandum from Deputy Commissioner William P. Shett. Number seventeen, received the reports of the Plan Commission City Engineer Corporation Council and approved the sidewalk easement, Palm Trees Plaza LLC, Palm Trees Road. Number eighteen, received the report of the Ad hoc Committee and refer code of ordinance ten dash nineteen-nine to ten dash one oh six and twelve dash thirty-four to a public hearing. And number nineteen, received the report of the Ad hoc Committee, hold no sidewalk easement and approve the license agreement as presented in accordance with the required permits, stipulations, and recommendations of the City of Danbury Department Heads. And execution is subject to the satisfaction in content or form of the Corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Legislative Leader. What is your pleasure, counsel? Uh, Mrs. Dyson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Seconded by Mr. Negashet. Any discussion? See, then, I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, the consent calendar. Motion carries. The man is asleep. I'll throw that one, please.
Communication, appointment to the police department. Your council members, I hereby submit for your confirmation. I hereby submit to your confirmation the appointment of the following individuals to the position of police officer. Mr. Thomas Generalakos, Danbury, Connecticut. Generalakos is currently employed as a medical laboratory technician at Danbury Hospital and has served in this capacity for the last nine years. Mr. Generalakos served on the active duty in the U.S. Air Force for six years and earned the rank of Staff Sergeant E-Sex as a medic and lab technician. He continued to serve in the era of National Guard since leaving active duty involves the rank of Master Sergeant and has been deployed to Iraq and Afghanistan a total of eleven times since two thousand and three. Mr. Generalakos' current rank on the police office, officer eligibility list is number four and it is anticipated that he will attend the Connecticut Coast Training Academy beginning July sixteen, two thousand and twelve.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What is your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. We will accept the communication and approve the appointment of Thomas Generalakos to the position of police officer for the City of Danbury.
Second. Made and seconded by Mr. Webber. Uh, any discussion about the appointment of Mr. Generalakos? See, you've done that, I'm sorry, your minds, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, Mr. Generalakos, congratulations. On behalf of the, uh, city council, myself, we want to welcome you to, uh, the best police department in the state of Connecticut. We're very proud of the, the hard work that they do. You've got a hard-working chief and, and great-trained people with Michael Jules in the team and your wife, who's one of my students, so, you know. You haven't much choice on this one.
My, 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 my father-in-law, Steve, is my beautiful daughter.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to our country. It's greatly appreciated. It's our honor to employ you.
Thank you.
Second appointment is Mr. Anthony Remus of Paul, Pauling, New York. Mr. Ramos currently holds position of Patient Access Associate slash Financial Liaison with the Danbury Hospital and has served in this capacity for the last five years. Mr. Ramos attended Western Connecticut State University where he completed coursework in Justice and Law Administration. Mr. Ramos' current rank on the police officer eligibility list is number thirteen and it is anticipated that he will attend the Connecticut Coast Training Academy beginning July sixteen to two thousand and twelve. The above individuals bring a broad range of valuable skills and experience to the Danbury Police Department. They will be a tremendous asset to the community and citizens of Danbury. Thank you for your consideration of these appointments. Sincerely, Mark May.
Madam Clerk, what is your pleasure, counsel?
This is Miss Conaty. My pleasure, Your Honor. I want to accept the communication to appoint, uh, Mr. Anthony Ramos, Pauling, New York, to the position of police officer of the City of Danbury Police Department.
Second. Made and seconded by Mr. Perkins. Uh, any discussion about Mr. Ramos's appointment? See, then, I'll try your minds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. The man is asleep. Congratulations, Mr. Ramos. And on behalf of the city council, we want to welcome you to the appointment of the City of Danbury. We're proud that you stuck with the process that took a little bit of while to get you to this day, but, uh, we'll keep you very busy, uh, around July sixteen, two thousand and twelve. And again, you've got a great training team behind you, you've got a family led by your chief that will support you through this whole process and, uh, the sort of authority to see the work that is being done. Oh, not, not much, no. Sure. Congratulations and good luck to you. You have any family in New Hampshire?
Uh, none. They've not made it to that.
Okay. Congratulations, good luck to you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, item two was not consent. Item three was withdrawn. Item four, I'm not sure.
I have four communications, seven, Land, Rockwood Lane. Your city council members, intangible letter from Mr. Edward M. Johnson seeks to sell the city, like four point seven seven acres of land block land that abuts three city-owned parcels. In order for you to consider this, you may refer the request to committee to various departments such as Engineering Planning Assessor Corporation Council or both for review and advice. Sincerely, Mark P. Battman, Mayor.
What is your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Webber.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an Ad hoc Committee, including Corporation Council, Director of Finance, the Assessor's Office, and the Department of Planning.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Counselor Taylor, also had that because he's not here. Counselor Westell. I'm not sure if that applies.
Communication, entertainment, lease ordinance, code of ordinance, section eleven dash six and twelve dash seven four.
What is your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. Teague.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to a public hearing followed by a committee of.
Single injection and so ordered. Number clerk of six, please.
Communication, downtown incentive package, code of ordinance, section one dash two, six dash oh two, eleven dash seven, and seventeen dash seven.
What is your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this item to the Ad hoc Committee consisting of Corporation Council, the representative of the city senate, the director of economic development, the representative of the mayor's office, and the director of planning.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Mr. Garcia in the chair, Mr. Cabo, and Mr. Nero. I'm clerk of seven, please.
Communication, Danbury Aviation Lease.
What is your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Levy.
I'd like to refer this to an Ad hoc Committee, the Plan Commission Corporation Council, Director of Finance, Premier Forty-Nine Street.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Mr. Knapp in the chair, Mr. Scotts of public because he's not here, and Mr. Rabel. I'm clerk eight three fifteen, Rock and Set. I'm clerk eight of sixteen, please.
Resolution, proposed intersection and safety improvements for Newtown Road, which is city project eleven dash twenty-four. Dear Mayor, Howarth, City House Members, through the Houston County Valley Council of Elected Officials, which is the H B C B O, the city submitted an application for funding under the S D V Urban Program to improve safety and address capacity concern on SR eight oh six, which Newtown Road, the old Newtown Road. Proposed improvements include widening approximately sixteen hundred feet of Newtown Road and relining the old Newtown Road approach to Newtown Road, as well as improvements to five-hundred-foot section of Newtown Road between Eagle Road and Industrial Plaza Road. The project is in council stages and will move to design stage after the state receives a resolution of support from the city council. Sign up, the project will be completed by two thousand fifteen slash two thousand sixteen and construction should be completed by two thousand seventeen slash two thousand eighteen. Since the project is improving a state-owned roadway, the funding ratio is eighty percent federal and twenty percent state. No municipal funding required for this project. The estimate for this work is nine million, five hundred thousand without any cost to the city. Public improvement program guidelines require that a public information meeting be held to solicit public comment on the project. The public information meeting for this project was held on May fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, at seven PM in the City of Danbury Council chambers. Some property owners attended the meeting with, along with some council members and city officials. No negative comments were received by the public. At this time, the city council resolution supporting the project is required to be submitted to the state and closed for your review and action is a resolution prepared by Corporation Council's office. Please contact me if you have any questions. Thank you with best regards, Bruce Tumala, Director of Economic Development.
I'm clerk, what is your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Cabo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would make a motion to receive the communication and adopt the resolution with regards to the proposed intersection and safety improvements, SR eight oh six, Newtown Road, the old Newtown Road, between Eagle Road and Industrial Plaza Road, uh, S T P Urban Program City Project number eleven dash twenty-four. I'm authorized, you may lightly augment the, uh, the changed documents and other conditions as necessary for this application.
Second. Second, Mr. Cabo. Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion related to the, uh, application? Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to say I had the opportunity to, in a public hearing, wanted to thank our economic development director, Mr. Kama, as well as the public works, engineering, and legal staff. Those who were there, it was a great presentation, made. While this will create some disruption, it's much needed. Uh, the state engineers as well as the city staff really explained everything in great detail. And as somebody who, you know, lived and worked for many years in the community, and what as many of us do every day, we know it can be a pretty dangerous place with a lot of rear-end accidents. So I think it's much needed and, uh, some state projects, and it'll take a little while, this one seems to be moving along as well, and thank the city staff for that.
Mr. Sadi, any other discussion? Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hello? Is Perkins here? Your Honor. Um, for you to, uh, Mr. Adrian Robles, I believe, or someone who may be able to address this question?
Mr. Adrian Robles, please.
Um, does this road improvements address, um, the Palm Trees Road area between those two different mall, strip malls?
No, it doesn't. I, I think you were at the public hearing.
I was there.
Yeah, I did. It doesn't go that far. Project, um, it's not part of that.
Okay. I was just hoping it did because there are a lot of accidents coming in out of those two places.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? See, you've done that, I'm sorry, your minds, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Motion carries. The man is asleep. Item seventeen through nineteen were consent. Uh, I'm clerk of twenty, and it's actually a, a report.
Item twenty, Ad hoc report, referral of accessories, Bolivio Air Controls.
Mr. Cabo.
Your Honor, I would make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes as all members have copies and the copies are in file, and the registered citizens are.
Second. I must say, second, all in favor of not reading the report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. Okay, uh, we now stand motion to adopt the, uh, Ad hoc report, Mr. Knapp.
Quick, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the report of the Ad hoc Committee and adopt the resolution and agreement to defer increase in tax assessment to Bolivio Air Controls Inc. on improvements to real property in thirty-three Turner Road, Danbury, Connecticut pursuant to the provisions of law and the agreement.
Item David, Mr. Knapp, and seconded by, uh, Mr. Biscotti. A discussion that we just continue to, uh, Mr. Westell, I'm not sure where that.
Thanks, Your Honor. Uh, to begin with, I'm in favor, uh, not only in favor of the agreement, certainly in favor of the principle of having Bolivio stay in Danbury, uh, increase its production and hire more people. It's a good idea, uh, if we're lucky to have it. And if we go back just a bit to the previous agenda, item nineteen, which was the, um, official easement, although there is a section here, uh, section one, page nineteen-two, that says the city hereby grants a non-transferable revocable license to the licensees to allow a restaurant to use the property described below for purposes of providing additional restaurants, et cetera. What that essentially means is the agreement going forward is revocable at the discretion of the city. I don't see anything like that in Bolivio Air Control. And I won't plead asking for one this evening, but it does bring up a point, I think, moving forward when we do enter into these complicated, multi-year tax abatement, uh, agreements with, uh, private partners in the city of Danbury for the city's benefit, for the employees and the tax base, that I, I think it would be advisable at least to look in the future for some sort of, uh, language in the parent ordinance, again, not necessarily the parent ordinance, that would give the city perhaps a little bit more control, uh, if, if, if at some point down the road, again, this, I'm not going to believe we're talking about parent ordinance that controls this, if our partner, uh, has troubles down the road, we are not selling a seven-year or a five-year or a three-year deferral for a company that's down in a different business. I know this in one of the resolutions, let's see if I can. You know, it's probably a phone conversation, but if, if I could, uh, through the, through Corporation Council, if Mr. Pinder could address at least a little bit why he thinks that this agreement is essentially going to be held fast by both parties, and certainly the City of Danbury is not allowed to back down. What's going to happen if down the road there is some issues with the present, how we can, what, uh, recourse for the city?
Mr. Westell, the answer to that question is that in, unlike number nineteen, which would indicate that it's involved in license agreements, license agreements are the lower level agreement that is terminable at the city, in certain cases not terminable except the thirty-day limits and others. In the case of a tax, like, deferral, uh, the parties come together with much more comprehensive negotiations and commitments and would rely on each other for the early part of the arrangement. Uh, a party, for example, has to commit to coming into a community, the community has to convince a partner to commit. The agreement, the deferral agreement in your package, is actually a little stronger than the ordinance that you've been presenting, that the clause you're referring to, which, uh, exists in, in the overall package, which will be signed by the parties, indicates that the tax deferral recipient has to agree to two things essentially, and that's in number two of that agreement. They have to agree that they will remain, maintain the use that they continue to do in the original application, um, approved by the planning department and by the city council. And also that they would maintain the design criteria and specifications that also they originally came in with. So that's probably the lynchpin of what you're most concerned about, and we all are most concerned about, which is, what if somebody changes the game after the, you know, after halftime? after the, you know, after halftime, for example? And there's just a couple reasons why that won't really happen. Number one, because of those commitments made, we will know, because there's certifications required by city officials, the planning director, the building official, and others, that they have complied with what they promised to comply with. And secondly, there are, in addition to paragraph two, there's some other commitments that they have to make that they will keep in order to maintain the tax deferral that they requested. So there are fairly decent commitments and promises built in safeguard. If we look at the ordinance, we may be able to impose a couple more, tighten it up a little bit, and bring that clause from the agreement into the ordinance. And it has to be deferred, but so that strength is already in this agreement, as well as the others before. I hope that answers.
Okay, if I can follow up. Yeah, and on page 24, you've got Section 3, something from D. You mentioned, basically, this agreement will remain in effect in effect as long as the applicant, the use remains unauthorized use by Section 1825 of the City of Danbury Code of Ordinances. This may be a matter of time. Is that a fair, a fairly narrow use ordinance? Or does that give the applicant a broad range to go up several businesses, which may not have been considered during this particular ad hoc?
The use, the use is permitted in that section allowed for office use, manufacturing use, use or industrial use. And this applicant came in with a manufacturing use for air controls. So that's what they committed to. That's what they were given, or will quickly be given, the approval based on, if they, if they switch to a different manufacturing use, they could violate the agreement. If they, if they, if they submitted a completely different plan, if they change their minds entirely and did, for example, a retail concept for ten years, then that would be a violation in that circumstance. So basically, the 1825 provides the parameters, and they're within those, as long as they maintain the use.
Okay, and you're comfortable that 1825 is actually, keeps them well within the parameters?
Within the box, within the box. Yes, within the box of uses.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion with Mr. Perkins? Or Mr. Sheed, you see, I'll keep looking at that.
Do you have a Corporation Council, I may want?
Yeah.
On, on 20 dash four, number two, about the, the state, about the certification by the planning department, it mentions in there that GE Capital shall be liable for increasing taxes. Who's GE Capital in this type of action?
That may be a, a surface error. So we'll have to correct that as a possibility.
Should be believable.
We apologize for that.
Thank you. We never make mistakes, but in the case of the time, we. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. To you, Mr. Pedron. I'd like to follow up on a comment that one of the public speakers made. You mentioned something about an application being pulled. Can you just tell us anything about that?
Let me, let me just add a little. Let me just be clear, because I'm, there is something huge about this. Well, Lino is not using the existing Noble Building. They're leveling the building, that's all. So I think some people are in the impression that we have, but they're not, that's not happening. What the question was, that the height of the building may or may not have needed, if the new building, right in the middle, may or may not have needed a variance. It was determined after, Lino had done some preliminary drawings, and they did, after refining those drawings a little bit more, they realized that they didn't dip out within the, within the zoning regulation now. So they just withdrew the variance because they don't need it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Any discussion on this?
Mr. Sade.
Thank you, Your Honor. Previous council people and Corporation Council addressed many of the concerns I had, and I look forward to seeing the Lino, which is a great corporate neighbor and supporting the City of Danbury expanding. In addition to Councilman Lattrell's concerns about the actual employment, use, and designs who'd be addressing this, this one I just want to put out for the purposes of consideration by the council going forward in these types of situations, is strongly encouraging, I know many of the corporate neighbors that get these tax breaks and the folks who do this, but that they seek local vendors, local labor first, if at all possible. Local taxpayers are supporting this, the city's supporting them. We hope they stay here, and we hope they can spend and we invest that money locally. A little hesitant to ask that to be written into agreements without a ordinance that is passed sub-legal to constitutional muster and has been vetted significantly, because we don't want to impose a strict, a restriction that may push companies out of Danbury. But just something to consider in going down the road in conjunction with some of the other issues that we brought up tonight. With that, I would absolutely support this. The Lino's been a good, a good corporate neighbor and to benefit to our city. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion? Mr. Cawley.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I just want to thank Mr. Tamala and Mr. Shepherd in your office for the, the.
Three years, two, three years.
For your work on this endeavor. You know, it's always great, and it's at this ad hoc, it's great to see businesses wanting to stay in Danbury and wanting to expand in Danbury and make the investment to buy property and, and not lease it as much for a currency. Very happy to see that. And also, it was advised that we ad hoc that as Lino's one of the city's largest employers of people from the Lino beyond disability, and I applaud them for that. And we're grateful that they chose to stay in Danbury and move forward to working with them as they move forward and expand their business here. Let's hope others follow suit with it. So thank you to your office, thank you to Mr. Shepherd. Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cawley. Any discussion? So you done that, I'll try your mic. Tell us, favor, signature for my saying aye?
Aye.
Any negative? Motion for various amnesty. Would you look to, uh, Mr. President, final reports.
Your Honor, with regards to the final reports, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading, as all members have copies and copies are on file. I think I'll just say that, so it's in charge.
Second. Second by Mr. Perkins. Any discussion with the final reports? Mr. Biscotti.
Thank you, Mr. Sade. I'd just like to say a quick thank you to Mr. Stillman. I had to contact him, some neighbors calling me, property in Malibu, Southern Boulevard corner. And I don't think it was two hours later that the neighbor called me back and said, "Who did you contact?" And I said, "Well, it wasn't Ghostbusters, but I guess they got the mail." Not two hours later, everything was taken care of, and I really appreciate that, I'll say.
Further discussion in the final reports? Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to commend the public works for the great job they did on the middle of the bridge. And you did it ahead of schedule, and great job, thanks.
Your budget is low. Sort of, we really don't have the real budget. The Lino's target. Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the Health Department reports, they have a reference to the Dream House Community Center, and some outlines there, and I was, I would ask, in that item 11, we appropriated additional funds. And I was also looking, and I see that we do an additional substantial amount of in-kind services. As a matter of fact, our, our health director and the support staff for all of the homeless shelters that we've made quite a commitment here in Danbury. And I would like to hear you, Mr. Mayor, expand a little bit on exactly what we are doing. I know there's, it seems to some, it's never enough, but certainly, when we look at the surrounding communities, we're absorbing their, their problems as well. It can't be in total denial that they have no homeless at all. We're taking up that gap as well. Some would take the position of not to do anything with the homeless at all. And to, we have to deal with residents in Danbury, and we have to take care of our own and others that visit the area. And I know that we've done a lot, and I wish you would expand on that.
You know what? Thank you, Mr. Levy, for the question. We appreciate your thoughts. We have done a remarkable job at servicing a very difficult problem in Danbury. Your points are, Mrs. Lawler, who left her points for spot on earlier, that homelessness is a regional problem. And as such, it requires regional solutions. And the notion that only in Danbury we can solve the five hundred thousand population region is simply not really possible. But I did include on the diage for you, you may have a copy of this, but it gives you kind of a breakdown of the facilities that we have in Danbury. I just want to, just throw out to you that the homeless beds that we show at the top, not all of those have been created since the inception of the plan. Some of them prior to the plan. Now, I'll get your copy, Mr. Nero. But it gives you, for example, there's a hundred and sixty beds on any given night, not counting our overclothed shelters since the start of this administration. We actually added two shelters. We had the New Street Shelter and the Dorothy Day Hospitality House. We now have the Jericho Partnership Shelter, which is open now, as well as the Winston Lewis Cultural Leadership Church, which was renovated with the advice and assistance of our engineering department, Leo, Sean, and a whole bunch of people that have converted that. On top of that, we have been very, very helpful in putting through transitional supportive and permanent housing. And since the inception of the tenure plan, we've put a hundred fifteen units online. A hundred fifteen units online in the worst economy since Great Depression. Now, could we use three hundred again? Sure. But at some point, too, we have to ask that our surrounding communities provide the same commitment towards this problem. It can't just be a Danbury problem, because you're never going to ever make a debt in it. We have to see affordable housing in other communities. And there's ten towns in the Newtitanic region. There ought to be ten sets of affordable housing, ten sets of ten-year plans that they're working on to handle their fair share. But just quickly, for example, Renaissance Place, maybe known as the old high-rise gardens of Fort Belge, for the first time ever, we're using Section 8 vouchers to help pay mortgages. So those people that are paying rents, we've now been able to convert those vouchers and assisting them in their mortgage payment. And by the way, those are brand-new condominium units, and the review of, I know, Barry T. helped a little bit, helped a lot in that. Since oh, oh seven, Samuel's Court, twenty-eight units of transitional supportive housing were put online that provides direct care, wraparound services to people that are there that are dealing with substance abuse issues. Sixteen units of Sunrise Terrace. Stetson Place, we're now using the Section 8 program. First time we've ever gotten a degree that's allowed to use towards homeownership, where we're offsetting the cost of the mortgage with the Section 8 voucher. We also, Victoria Meadows, which is twenty-five-plus units, about the Teller's property, we do a lot. There are mental health, he has a lot of mental health issues. Many of those units are dedicated to people with mental health issues and also happen to happen to be homeless and have homeless issues. So we've done a tremendous amount in a very short amount of time to meet the two seventy-five mark. Keep in mind, we've got sixty more years to go, or five more years to go in the plan. So, you know, at this rate, we'll just about hit our mark towards the units online. Here's the problem though. Since two thousand, August of 2008, and market crash, a problem as once like this is now like this. So, you know, we have a lot more transitional people that are flowing in and out of the community. It's not uncommon, where I talk to people every day from other parts of the country, from other parts of the state, that comes in here, because they know in this area, you know, we, you know, we are caring and compassionate for them. But it can overwhelm the system, in fact, at times. There's no question about it. So we're excited about it. Homeless partnership, the Housing Partnership meets every month. Their public meetings, we welcome you to. We've had them, I think, we've had them, but also do them in the middle of the day. But, and we have some, I think, Mr. Shepherd, we, for the next couple of weeks, I consider, in some certainty, we'll be announcing another supportive housing complex that will be built in the city. So we're working hard on this issue, but it's a next and difficult challenge.
You know, I, like many members of the council serve on volunteer committees. I know that one of them I serve on is in Salvation Army. And we've seen a thirty percent increase on people making requests in the Salvation Army. And the same people that used to donate are now the recipients of the donations. It's a state we're in, and certain that the number of foreclosures, I think, that the mayor has pointed out, which is the largest number of foreclosures we've ever seen in the history of this community, all bears on the fact that we have a homeless population that exploded way before this plan went into, was approved. So that we all have to step in and do our part. And I'm glad to see that the Jericho and some of the other organizations have stepped in to be a partner with Danbury. Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Rep.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the town of Tonya and the public works who have been working over at Haver's Park on the, spending the parking lot, addressing a major parking issue for many years of the use of softball fields and doing any house security. Appreciate it, and we've all proved out there. And also mentioning, Rotheridge Apartments, Summer Hoop Nights on the seventh, fourteenth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-eighth at dusk, and the work that gets done there is going to bring a program here after here for people going to go in there.
It's been a lot better than us shaving.
That'd be a big complaint, it's bigger than a thing. And just, who counted on Saturday whether the middle of February?
Thank you, Mr. Rep. Mr. Lattrell.
Thanks, Your Honor. In Washington, on the sixth of August, the recent weeks, I've been approached by generally elderly people who have expressed a certain feeling of unease, if not fear, about this purported crime wave that's sweeping the city. And while I tell them that I don't think things are any worse than they've ever been, and, you know, it's July, the weather's nice, get outside and enjoy nature, I'm looking at these departmental reports, the, the City of Danbury 2012 uniform prime report, and I see that robbery is down fifty percent. Assault is down ten percent. This is year-to-date. Burglary is down ten percent. Car theft is down forty percent. I do see a bump in regular theft. I'm not exactly sure what regular theft is. I'll tell you, fifteen percent. But if, if there's a, a crime wave with drug-addled desperado, driving over students, hiding behind every corner, I'm not only not seeing it in the sixth, I'm not seeing it in the statistics. So if, if Chief Baker could speak on this briefly, just to sort of clear the air here, are we going through a period of unusual, of unusual criminal activity? Or is this just something that's been openly reported from the news? Is this more a question of perception? Or is something actually going on? Because I have to tell you, I'm not, I'm not, not only am I not seeing I have to tell you, I'm not, I'm not, not only am I not seeing your statistics, it looks to me like you're reversing trends that were up last year and that were now down in, in, in the right way. You're heading in the right direction.
We're fortunate in Danbury that there's not a lot of violent crime and it is a very safe city. What drives our crime is property crime, burglaries and thefts. And much like last year, when the weather got warmer, those numbers spiked in May. Very happy to report that we had about a third the number of burglaries during June than we did in May. You know, we had fifty-eight in, in May. Those numbers are in the low twenties for June. And that's because of public awareness, uh, you know, through groups like this, through the news media, a couple of good arrests for burglary, a couple of arrests, not for burglary, we've got some bad people off the street, some good arrests by the state police. And so it's been a real team effort, but what you're seeing is no different than what you saw last year. A lot of these crimes are crimes of opportunity. They're crimes that occur because of the warm weather and if we just lock our doors, keep an eye on each other, we can drive these numbers down. But that's what drives crime in, in Danbury is property crime. And we're very fortunate, we're not like a Bridgeport or a Haven or a Hartford, where violent crime is the driving crime. So, yeah, when, when property crime spikes in Danbury, it's of concern, but like I said, there are a number of different measures, I think, that we could have had under control.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to follow up on a comment made by one of the public speakers earlier, concerning Rivers Park, we actually had a, an ad hoc at Sunset, and we weren't able to address some of the concerns that that woman actually had herself. We're looking at various aspects of recreation. We're going to discuss noise and also some lighting. What I wasn't aware of was the garbage. Could someone from the department address that to figure out what, where all that noise is coming from for garbage trucks?
Just, I want to make sure I get a question. You, I don't know what, what the, the fact of the week is-
No, no, I mean, she, she mentioned that there's, there's trucks out there early in the morning on a Sunday picking up garbage. It seems unusual.
No, no, we pick up garbage on Sundays.
What, what time are they out there about?
I think it starts as early as five. Yeah, we have to pick up garbage, we have to rake the fields, we have to be ready for the first game. Sometimes we start as early as, maybe even at five.
I mean, that just seems like a quality of life issue, especially for people who live so close to that area. I mean, there, there has to be a way to figure out how to, you know, not disturb people on-
Well, maybe I can drive forward instead of backwards.
Well, no, well, essentially, maybe I should yell the word, just kind of translate that.
No, I'm serious. Maybe I can drive forward.
I would say, I think, I think it's similar to those folks who live close to a golf course. You know, and I know how to work at a golf course. My days started right to park at four thirty in the morning. And we would fire up those, uh, mowers and we would be out mowing and the residents would scream that they're trying to sleep on Sunday morning. I don't know how you win on that one. And, you know, if you, if you push it back to seven, and say you can't start to seven, those fields will not be ready. So instead of Mrs. Mitchell being here, your softballers here screaming about why can't you guys get this stuff cleaned up because we're not able to start our games?
Well, yeah, I understand, Your Honor, but I, I think probably a better approach would not be for some of the, the department has to be so dismissive on such a sense of issue.
I'm not being dismissive of the city council. I am telling you that we have a program, which involves picking up garbage at five thirty in the morning. Those people line the fields. If you would like to add additional people on overtime basis to pick up the garbage later-
Those people do have quite, quite overtime anyway.
It is overtime. But these are the same people that are picking up the garbage and eventually lining the fields, a tag team, and help each other out.
How about if, I mean, we picked, we lined the fields first, you still got them on the Yorba, you still got them, you still got them on the San Fron, you still got them-
Well, the trucks still come in with the trailer and it's got the equipment to rake the fields. All right, well, I'll see if I can, because it was going to take some time.
Thank you, Your Honor. I really don't know where to begin on this one. I had to bite my tongue on some of it. I am neighbor of the person who spoke previously about the five o'clock problem. It does exist, it's noisy, but it's not the only one. We have a garage person who's picking up garbage at four o'clock at CBS at their dumpster and they bang the doors wherever it is constantly. Is there a reason that you have to do the fields at five o'clock? Because living right in that area, I don't see anybody playing softball at eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning, or, or the Cal Ripken team playing there at eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning. I think we need to have some consideration possibly to look into that situation where five o'clock would be, maybe six o'clock. But it does get noisy and it is sometimes disturbing to those of us who live in that area.
I will review the schedule and see if I can, as long as it doesn't involve additional overtime or breaking in additional personnel. And if it does, that's a decision that the mayor can, can make and adjust my budget accordingly.
If you could follow up, if I may, prepare. The, the person who spoke earlier also discussed the problem of the noise with the westerners and all they did was go down and turn the speaker around. That was, that was really good because that solves a lot of the problem. There isn't, there has been, and up until this particular year, quite a bit of noise problems in the, in the, in that area, Rivers Park area. Not just with the westerners, but the Cal Ripken field and, uh, a few other people, a few other entities that play down there. This, this year I've been able to talk with Mr. Hadhead and a few other people with the Cal Ripken Association, and what they did was basically the same thing. They, they actually took the speaker down, which was turned towards the Mount Paul Avenue side. And I have, I have received phone calls from Deer Hill where they could hear the, the noise and the music and so on. And since we've been a little bit more active in getting things taken care of, it has been a lot better this year. And I do appreciate what the westerners did, for Mrs. Mitchell.
Well, I would ask, I think, just a reminder on the westerners, you know, as the TV goes on, do you mind? Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just with regard to the sound of the trucks backing up and not to speak to public works specifically of their issues, with regards to other developments that occurred in the water represent, some traffic engineers and some of the developers have said that the types of trucks they would use, they would use alternate sounds with a different pitch and a lower decibel that still beat motion standards. And I know retrofitting costs money, but just to throw that out there, something that maybe down the road is a phase in to retrofit with those, they don't, the sound doesn't seem to travel as far, the pitch doesn't seem as annoying. It's more of, I think, a grinding or a lower sound that still meets motion requirements. And that may be some of, at least some of the peripheral issues. Just to put that out there for you, Your Honor. Of course, I don't know if that's a feasible thing down the road.
I, I know that might kind of sound a little cavalier, but honestly, it might be as simple as driving forward instead of backwards.
If they're making a group.
Right.
Put that out there as some-
Yeah, but I do know what you're talking about, some alternating, yeah, backwards and forwards.
Something you can do is disconnect those.
You can, so we'll be part of it, yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion related to noise? Anything else? And then, I'll draw your mind, those are the papers that the fellows are saying, aye? Aye. If you oppose. Okay, just a couple of houses before we adjourn. Line nineteen is Mary Keith's birthday. Mary Tyseal's happy birthday. Nine twenty, it's Bill and Maggie Curran's wedding anniversary. Nine twenty-six, the Jack and Lisa Naps wedding anniversary. As Councilman Webmore mentioned, we have Campbell Town Park movie night starting with line seven. So it's a well-attended event. In addition to that, the Korean War Memorial Ceremony is at the Korean War Monument, Rives Park, at ten AM. And then we do need some help, some volunteer help for those folks that are volunteer-minded if they're at home or if they're here tonight in terms of the audience or the council. The, uh, we're doing the dignity memorial Vietnam wall, which is a, it's a, a model of the Vietnam war. It's a two-thirds scale model will be set up at the war memorial on September twenty-first and twenty-third. It's a three-quarter replica. It's pretty impressive. Uh, we have two co-chair people that are spearheading this project, Eric Tanner and John Malkowski. We're looking for volunteers to help erect the wall, to help man the wall. So it's really actually a big deal to have this in the community and it draws hundreds if not thousands of people to find their loved ones or folks that they have lost to the war. So if you're interested in helping out in any capacity, contact PJ in my office at seven eight seven, forty-five eleven. With that, now extend all committees and I'll take a motion to adjourn. So, same on the Taylor, seconded by Mr. Magus, all favoritists, if you can, if you can, aye? Aye.
Hello, I'm Lieutenant John Brown with the Danbury Police Department, and I'm in charge of the community policing unit. I'd like to offer you some crime prevention tips today specifically on the topic of burglary prevention. There are three things that you can do to help your property, either commercial or residential property, and to prevent it from becoming a victim of a burglary. And they are light, time, and noise. You should always be sure that your property has sufficient lighting to deter your residence or business from becoming a victim of a burglary. Light, be sure that the exterior portion of your residence or business has plenty of and sufficient lighting that illuminates your property from up to fifty feet away. Consider installing variable timers on the interior portion of your business or residence and also consider trimming shrubs and trees that would help conceal a burglar during the process of a burglary. Time, consider installing deadbolt locks with keys on all doors which contain glass. We want to make it more time-consuming for the burglar to make entry into your residence or business. Noise, consider installing a burglar alarm which would notify your neighbors of a burglar's presence. You should also consider getting a dog which would also create a disturbance should an unknown person enter your residence. Also, report any acts of suspicious activity to the Danbury Police Department at two oh three, seven nine seven, four six one one. Thank you.